County 4H Leaders Council. And Kevin, I've got, I guess, information to hand out. I just want to formally invite the Commissioners, Kevin, Lou, to the 4H showcase that's about a month away, starts August 4th. I gave one to Jeff, so if anyone wants extra, I have some with me after the meeting. But there's also attached the Michigan Association of Fair and Exhibition, and Michigan Fund, joined forces together and put one brochure of all the festivals and the fairs in the state of Michigan. So that's also attached. The half-cheap flyer that I've given you doesn't have all the times for the shows. We've moved them around a little bit since then that was published. So you can go to the website for Kalamazoo County 4H and get the specific showtimes if you so desire. That's all I have. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much, Andrea. Is there anyone else which was wishing to make public comment? Or anyone online?
Chair, there is no hands raised.
Thank you so much. Right, seeing no others, we will close our public comment. We'll move to item three. Review of Accounts Payable and our payroll dispersments with our Finance Director, Mr. Ryan Post. Welcome, Director.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem, Board of Commissioners. We have an Accounts Payable Claims List totaling $3,668,462.2. It's presented for review. Of this total, the Board of Commissioners asked to approve claims totaling $3,363,365.65. Payroll dispersments totaling $4,309,406.75. Represented for the June 20th in general and June 30th elected payrolls. Welcome. Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Director. If you have any questions. Nice and tidy yet again. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, we'll move to item four. Going to have the Household Hazardous Waste Center feasibility study presentation. Like to welcome our Health Officer, Jim Rutherford, and Planning and Development Director, Rachel Grober. Welcome.
Thank you. And Director Rutherford will join us shortly. I'll get started. So thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem, Vice Chair and Vice Chair Pro Tem and Commissioners. And thank you for your patience as the study was completed. Also, I wanted to recognize Environmental Health Division Manager Lucas Poles is here with us. And we, there was a big team that spent a lot of time on this. Manager Poles, HHW Senator or Center Manager Jennifer Kozak, Health Officer Rutherford, Deputy Director Lenz, and then our consulting team at RRS, especially Kristen Wieland. Kristen spent many years at the Department of Public Works in Kent County and working with household hazardous waste specifically. So it's very good to have her as part of our consulting team. So. And to start, get right to the point here. Next steps really, there are four reports that were provided to you in the packet that our consultants pulled together. Really, the next step is to find a property. And the report recommends a minimum of two acres for current operations, but really looking at research in other communities, they're closer to 12 acres. So I think 12 acres would be the recommendation. So that would be step one. And the location, the current location is great centrally located in the county, but there's other reasons that it may not be the best location in the Parks Department and, you know, for other reasons. So and also to get 12 acres at that location will be sort of a challenge. So really, we need to look for 12 acres that allows access to the site for trucks that come in to help with the disposal and customers that are coming in. So that's, you know, properly signed where everyone should go. Parking for the visitors to the center, the staff for the center. And then the next step would be to utilize the Board of Commissioners has already approved $250,000 for capital funding for a new HHW facility design. So I think that would be locate and purchase or obtain property and then go move forward with designing what the new site should look like. Dina, can you move to the, actually, next slide? So I just wanted to touch on two parts of the four reports for this presentation today, given our time constraints. The current facility limitation, so you can really see that this is really a critical need that we need to get them in order to continue operating and operate efficiently with current services that a new facility is needed. But I wanted to look at future design considerations and then potentially some additional added material down the road that might be considered. So next slide, please. This is just showing some photos of the kind of inefficiencies currently. You can see that they're waiting for a disposal truck to come and get several boxes and right next to the facility, I think that was for electronics. And then you can, you can kind of see, but back in the far back is also at the same time, the oil truck was coming to handle the disposal for motor oil. So that is, you know, challenging staging and storage for the facility. In the lower photo, that was six days of collection of chemicals from people's, you know, pesticide and those types of use from households. There's another 24 days before the next pickup. So that is going to be overfilled quickly. That was a fast, you know, vastly filling up. So it'd only been six days since the pickup. And the other slide is just showing there's only one covered spot for a vehicle as people come to do the drop off. And it takes a few, it's not a long time. They're pretty efficient. But it takes a few minutes to, you know, see what material they're bringing in and to unload cars. The safety limitations, this kind of illustrates the left side. This is, there is not a direct sight view of this from the main part of the HHW Center into this piece that was added on later. So it's hard for the people in the offices or staff to see to the other parts of the facility, which is not really the best safety practices. And then the HVAC system is located outside and is sorely needed for replacement. The thresholds between connecting locations are challenging to get pallets of material over. So that would be something to consider in the new design. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the break room. And you could see what that issue already is. There's the HVAC, another part of HVAC system there and where they're storing cleaning chemicals and so on. So there's not really a good break area for, and there's not a meeting space either. That's, we did meet in a director or manager Kozak's office for consultants. So it's very cramped in there to have meeting space. Next slide, please. So this shows the current existing facility in less than 0.6 acres in the red outlined area. And then the blue area actually is not HHW. That little blue box is actually the visitor bathrooms for the expo campground. So it's not part of the HHW Center. I wanted to kind of highlight that, that that's not for use by the HHW Center. So under 0.6 acres, the fencing and gates in the community survey that was given and participants expressed just concern of the signage fencing. It was a little intimidating. They weren't sure where to go. You know, I don't know if that's true for everyone, but there were some, some of that expressed in the community survey. There's limited parking. There's definitely limited access for disposal trucks to come in or to store material, even outside, material that can be stored outside. Next slide, please. Actually, you can go, I think, one more, one more. Okay, so I wanted to touch on, this is the current participation rate. So you've seen that there has been steady growth, a little bit of a decline during COVID. And then the bottom graph shows, shows the weights of material that was collected and disposed of. So that is material that is thankfully not making it to the landfill, should not make it to the landfill, is dangerous to go into a landfill. So next slide. So that's the historic. So the future through 2050 shows the population estimates, looking at population estimates. So we're expecting some growth in population and then would also anticipate just for current services and increase in the amount of materials collected, in the weights of material collected. These are just some pictures of some other HHW facilities and recycling facilities around the country that I think kind of illustrate, you know, this one has, the top one has really clear signage and is safe for visitors, visiting the facility, knowing where to go. The current center has a swap shop. They'd like a little more access to the swap shop. It's like if somebody brought in a full unopened container of a pesticide, somebody else could come in and use that pesticide, you know, as an example. Spray paint is one I think that they used to take. Lucas might correct me on that. So the new facility should have definitely improved storage and staging areas, clear and welcoming signage, like I said, improved lighting and outdoor lighting. Next slide, please. I think this one illustrates, this is in Florida. This illustrates definite good access for your disposal trucks to come in. You could potentially store some trailers if you needed to store trailers longer term. And there's buffer zone around the, around the center. Locating a site with 12 acres will allow for safer and efficient operations plus allow for future population growth and collection needs. I know probably 20 years ago when the facility was added on to, they were not considering the need to collect lithium ion batteries, highly flammable material. So with, as technologies change, there's a needed change. So I really think having at least 12 acres would give the community what the community needs are. We could move a little quicker if we needed to for material types if there were changes in technologies that needed to be kept out of the landfill. So for the next part, I wanted to just hit on a little bit of what the survey looked at. What, what might be, what might additional materials could the facility consider? Once we've built a facility that can do existing operations, what are some additional materials that might help in the materials management planning process? As you guys are aware, as you are all aware, the Materials Management Planning Committee has been looking at the simplest ways to enhance the waste infrastructure in the community and what are some of the low hanging fruit that might be able to add so that we're diverting, meeting diversion goals? So the state has a goal of recycling rate of 30% by 2030. And then really, they, they had it, it wasn't 45% by 2030. They're not going to hit that. So 2030 now is 30%, but 45% is the overall goal. So the county, currently, the state is at 25%. So they're making some improvements. It wasn't at 23% a couple of years ago. So there's slow improvement. But there's additional materials that should, that could be easy to keep out of the landfill. So what could that look like? Next slide, please. And some of the materials from the community survey and the municipal interviews that were done. Styrofoam is a top one. The city of Kalamazoo has been very, had very successful events. They are running out of space and are looking at options for trying to expand that. Latex paint is not one we can currently take, but there's definitely vendors that are, that can take it. There's a vendor from Ohio that can take it. So that would be one that could be an easy add. But there has to have temperature control, so that is not available right now. There's no space actually in temperature control currently. Mattresses, appliances, a lot of different items could be easy items to add. Next slide. So this is a, just a photo of a foam densifier that might, might help meet one of those goals. Several communities across the country have these. It densifies it into smaller material that's easier to ship. And there's actually a lot of uses for recycled foam. So right now, I think the last collection for the city of Kalamazoo was three and a half trailers. So the very large pieces of the EPS foam take up a lot of space. So you could really probably get, if you densified it first, you could get that three and a half trailers down to maybe one trailer. So I don't know the exact, you know, ratio, but it's quite small. They're like small blocks that come out on the other side. Next slide, please. And then trucks is another one. They are looking for communities to have a baler that bales plastic film. And boat wrap is another one. Plastic film that you drop off your bags sometimes to recycle at Meyer, the plastic grocery bags. They actually use that for trucks decking and they're building another facility. So they really need plastic film. So that's actually a commodity. If we could potentially get grants for a baler, we could sell the bales of plastic film. So those seem like low hanging fruit and a easy to operate material that could be added to an HHW Center. However, we do need to look at what are the other communities doing? And are we just repeating what they're doing or can we collaborate together? There are some communities that have talked to their cities. Western Washtenaw County has cited their recycling facility in the city of Chelsea on one of their properties for six townships that requested that. Requested the help of their County Board of Public Works to cite a facility and they talked to their city to do that. So there might be collaboration here. That could be a possibility as well. There's also many grants for infrastructure right now. So could we add some materials that would be helpful for HHW? That's another consideration. And again, what are the next technologies that might need to be added to the HHW site? So I wanted to bring Health Officer Rutherford up to also add some comments.
Thank you. And Director Grober was just being generous when she put my name on this presentation because she did most of the lift here. But I do want to, again, thank her for the time and energy that she's put into this as well as from my team, Lucas Poles. Really, what I want to do is just emphasize the gratitude from ACS towards administration and towards the Commissioners for kind of moving this, this pan to hopefully a front burner. We've talked about this for quite some time. I think that through the pictures, it really tells a story. If you haven't had a chance to visit the facility, I'm sure most of you have, grab some stuff that you want to get out of your garage or your basement and head over to Lamont Street. You'll recognize a very well-run facility that is really outgrown its, its current existence. And that's a good problem to have because it's a very successful program. And decades ago, when your predecessors decided to, you know, take that step and do something that most counties didn't do at that time and most counties haven't done to date is significant. And we've always been cutting edge in Kalamazoo County. I encourage you to, you know, continue with that, with that philosophy, with, you know, the vision of something bigger, better. You know, several months ago, my staff came to you, Lucas's staff came to you and talked about groundwater contamination. And what can we do as a, what can you do as a body of commission? As what can we do as, as public health officials to, to limit and mitigate? You know, certain, certain things that have happened, you know, in just about every community our size, all communities our size have contamination. But this is an example of you stepping forward and saying, we're going to continue to support this type of work. It's important. It's keeping dangerous products out of our groundwater. It's recycling. It's exciting to see the potential for the city of Kalamazoo wanting to do some hopeful expansion and hopefully some collaboration. Because I, you know, I envision a 12 acre, you know, parcel would allow for not only our expansion at HHW, but another expansion or another, you know, undertaking that's going to pick up some of those items, you know, tires, styrofoam, mattresses. If you've ever tried to get rid of a mattress, it's next to impossible. So that's why you see some of that stuff just dumped in the woods. And hopefully, you know, this, this type of, of opportunity for the community will address that. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
And I also wanted to, I'm glad he said that, that the current operation is, they are really well-run. This is not, you know, any, any saying anything bad about the current HHW. It's just that it is at its, at its maximum capacity. So I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. So what questions do you have? I know I didn't touch on a couple of the reports, but.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much and thank you very much for this presentation. I'm a huge, huge fan of household hazardous waste. I think it is just a great, not only a great governmental collaboration opportunity with all the local townships that are, that are contributing. I do have a couple of questions. I know that we, at least in the past, I'm not sure if we still do, had municipalities outside the county that were contracted with this household hazardous waste. Would they continue to contract with the system if we were to build it?
Yes, and actually, I think they just picked up another county. Berry County.
Olive Berry County?
Yes, Olive Berry County.
Oh, wow.
And portions of St. Joe County and Berry, Olive Berry County, I believe.
And a little bit of Van Buren.
And some townships in Van Buren County. So the materials management planning process is also encouraging ways to collaborate with your neighbors. So that's definitely part of the conversation for sure. How does, I mean, Kalamazoo could almost, you know, be that kind of hub and bespoke, right?
And, and that's kind of where I was going with that. I do, I'm in favor of the 12 acres and the larger facility just because it allows us that opportunity to just not only expand or not only just have a collaboration with our local townships, but kind of reach out and beyond. My question had to do, when you had graft up there with potential use or use in years that are coming down the road, was there any thought of what that would look like if we were to put advertising dollars into it? I know that a lot of people still don't know that this place exists.
That was part of the conversation. So that did, that was specifically not, that if there was a more robust advertising program, including, you know, how, what, what ways could be encouraged? There's also a lot of things that we've been talking about with the, how can we collaborate with other departments, including seniors? There's homebound seniors that have trouble getting materials to the, you know, so what ways could we collaborate? That would definitely increase the numbers and the amount collected for sure and the participation. That has not been done yet and that was not, that was not part of, they specifically stated that they did not include that a robust advertising program. So they would expect those numbers to be higher if there was a robust reaching out.
And I am certainly in favor of a robust advertising program to do that. I am also in favor of building a larger facility so that we can, we can accomplish those, those goals. I had a quick question on the, the site at the current Lamont Street. With adding on, we can't get like eight, 10 or 12, we can't get 12 acres with that current facility site. I guess, is that, is that the case?
Yeah, that's very limited, yeah. That would involve more conversations, I think, with some other departments too.
And then, but did this, and I tried to go through, there was a few different reports. I was looking for, is there a sort of a guesstimate on how many square footage and what it would cost per square foot for this type of facility versus a?
We didn't have that. Not, I don't know if, I'm not sure if maybe administration is aware or if the, I don't think the facility master plan looked at that yet. Or it was part of that. So, so that would definitely be in the site plan, I think, process.
Okay, um, I guess it just comes down to a planning. And I also saw that there were different public acts that you could be used to, to do this. I, I am in favor of expanding the facility. I'm in favor of advertising for that facility. So members of the community knows, know it exists. And I'm also in favor of not doing a millage to pay for it. We have the cash in our capital program that we can do this. And rest assured to the community out there, we can expand our recycling, reduce the amount that we're putting into our landfills and not raise their taxes. I think that's just a win-win on all, all fronts. So you have my full support.
Thanks, Chair Pro Tem.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. As I work, now, we want to work with you folks on this. Obviously, Vice Chair has expressed a great deal of interest. Obviously, we have to cite this in a place that's safe because we are dealing with hazardous materials. Probably our fairgrounds is not the best spot for that to be. So I am very much in support of finding a much better spot. The collaboration we have with our many different communities, many of the townships and villages and cities already participate in the hazardous waste by their contributions to the, the facility during the, during the year. And their people are allowed to come and bring their materials. Obviously, we're seeing that this is far exceeding its capacity. So I think we need to move expeditiously and locate a spot and then get the facilities that are more adequate and be that hub as we work through this and our materials handling. Kind of almost, they're almost partners in this type of thing because we eliminate by getting stuff to the house as hazardous waste and reduce the amount going into the landfills, which is a goal and the requirement now by the state of Michigan for, for the, all the counties in the state of Michigan to make sure this happens. So I thank you for the presentation and the work you're doing on this. And I look forward to working further to make this happen expeditiously.
All right, I have just one and most of my questions, Vice Chair, elevated. So I also am in, in support of the, the concept here. I think, just a comment, thinking about some of the more recent property acquisitions or property design. I really want us to be mindful about long-term growth. I mean, we, as you've elevated, you know, we didn't know lithium batteries would be a major component of waste handling. And we don't know, you know, what will be in the future. And so we do need to be able to be nimble. And we're talking about the groundwater exclusion zones and PFAS and other items that have contaminated, you know, portions of our groundwater. You know, it's really incumbent on us to make sure that we're preventing any and all of that we can. Because once it's down there, you know, the ability to recover or to clean up or to even, you know, estimate the sort of public health impacts it will have, we just can't know. So best is for us to be diligent and keep it clean to begin with. So encourage the community, you know, this sort of advertising campaign, I think, would be very important. That would be something I would want to see us prioritize. And understand all of our community members who might be seeing and hearing to take advantage of not just hazardous waste disposal opportunities, but recycling opportunities in your local jurisdiction and in your community. These things, you know, lessen the overall impact. There are some goals for utilization across the state. Where are we right now for utilization?
On the Materials Management Plan. That committee has, is collecting the information. There's four parts of the plan. We're looking at what is our current existing diversion rate, which is a little bit of a challenge to gather. But we're, we're working on the, the, where we are currently and putting together our goals. So that has been part of it. That committee is, is working on the goals portion. What are some of those things that we, that committee would like to put forward as potential diversion activities that could assist?
When was the last time we evaluated that conversion rate? How far back? Do we, have we ever quantified it?
No, and part of that is how materials are collected. It's, it's really, you know, we have private haulers that collect material and across jurisdictions. So it's hard for counties to specifically get it. There's new rules in place for how they report that information. So we should do a pretty good job. I don't, I don't think when we're looking at all of our numbers, I think we're pretty close to, to what the state's rate is. I think we have a pretty good participation on, in some programs, but there's definitely room for improvement in areas where we could improve.
Great. Well, I look forward to hearing, once we get that completed.
Hopefully, in the fall, we should start to have some of that data available.
Great. Thank you for your efforts on that. Director Poles, did you have some information that you wanted to share with us as well?
No, I was just really here, up here for questions. You guys laid out some really good points, talked about advertising. I'm huge on advertising. And we have it within our contracts to advertise through municipalities, but it's not large enough to do what I'd love to do where you're talking about billboards and all that sort of thing. So, yeah, I, I wholeheartedly like that.
And honestly, I'm a little nervous if we did too robust advertising campaign right now.
Right now, yeah.
They could handle the, the extra material. I mean, it'd be great, but.
And Jennifer and I have recently done some, basically traveling around the state to look at a couple of the places that have been built. And one in Washtenaw has been built recently and they outgrew it almost immediately. And you can just see by walking up, it's like what HHW what probably was 30 years ago. And they had to expand and expand. You just don't want to do that because you end up with all these accessory buildings and everything. So I'm really looking for, and I, I think we've got a really set where we've got these decades of, we kind of know what we need and we can extrapolate out and go from there, so.
Yeah, I encourage that. I think that's really important. So thank you. Thank you all for the presentation today. All right. Yeah, I encourage that. I think that's really important. So thank you. Thank you all for the presentation today. All right. Okay, that brings us to other items. We're going to have some discussion around the housing millage scoring process. Director Balkama.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Protem, Board of Commissioners. My name is Mary Balkama. As you know, the portal is open for funding for the 2025 housing millage. We have three categories of funding opportunities: multifamily, creative, and supportive services. Keeping in the spirit of transparency and best practice, it is a recommendation to set up an ad hoc committee of commissioners to score the projects. The portal closes on July 3rd, 2025, so we would like to score them during the month of July and have the recommended action before you in August. Chair, the recommended action is for you to determine if the board would like full participation or the formation of an ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Director Balkama. So Commissioners, what is the desire of the body? Do we all want to weigh in? Do we have individuals that would express a desire to participate in the ad hoc committee? Commissioner Morales?
If the masses want to all weigh in, I'm with that. But if not, I would like to be a part of the ad hoc committee.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Thank you, Chair. If we do an ad hoc, I'd also like to be a part of it.
See Morales, Wheeler, and Ray so far, and DeLu?
No, actually, just the opposite.
You have a comment? Yes, please. Thank you, Commissioners.
I'm in favor of the ad hoc committee, because I know there's people in this board that are much more in tune to the needs than I am. And I always have a difficult time scoring, trying to keep various aspects in mind of what's out there needing for the community. But I, again, I know there's people in this board that know, and I'd like to leave it in the hand of the experts. And I do not want to be.
Commissioner DeLu, Vice Chair Taylor.
Yeah, I think the ad hoc committee, what we did with the senior millage with Wendy and John worked well, Commissioner Kissler. I've got no problem with the ad hoc committee. I would like to make a recommendation, Chair Strub, that you serve on it. I think you're, you're in pretty in tune with the housing. I think that's, I, I would feel comfortable with an ad hoc committee as long as you served on it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. As I read that whole book last time and was grilling him over all the details. Vice Chair Protem, did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Chair. I'd be willing to help with that if necessary.
Commissioner Mazer?
Yes, I, I too am supportive of that. I wouldn't mind being on it, but it sounds like it's pretty full already.
No, you can be on it.
You certainly can. I mean, anyone who's interested in, in participation. So I do think at this time, looks like my consensus move forward with the formation of ad hoc. So I'm seeing Ray, Wheeler, Morales, Hepler. Yes, Commissioner Mazer, I would like to participate also. So you're going to still have most of us.
I love that. And we have scoring sheets, and so when we meet, we will make it as transparent as possible and simple. And I will send out, when the portal closes, the applications to everyone. If you're having trouble, or you cannot get in it, or any technical difficulties, we'll go over it in the meeting, and you'll have the scoring sheets available. I would ask if any of the respondents contact you, that you send them back to staff, so we can get all the questions, so the process is fair. But the minute that it closes, I will send you all of the applications. And so you'll be getting quite a few emails. It doesn't mean you have to read them in detail. It just means that you've received them, right? And then I will have a scoring matrix on every single category for everyone.
Nice, Chair.
Yeah, so we're not going to get any dollar bills with their face on it. And I'm going to change my, I'm just.
That was pretty creative, you have to admit.
Commissioner Morales?
Thank you, Chair. Director Balkama?
Yes.
How are you?
I'm good.
Loving the hair.
Thank you.
So I have some questions on this go-round. I've had some issues with some of our elders in the area trying to get into affordable housing. And as you know, I've always, the affordable homes for all, it's, it's just too blank for me. And so I've been running into a lot of the 40, 50, 60% units being taken up. And I understand that there are, you know, costs associated with taking care of the buildings, paying staff and all those things. But when we think about those units, for example, someone I know was at $31,000, and that was their annual disability. And so the 40 or 50%s were in a, all those units have been taken. And they said, well, what we have available for you, and they offered 13, a $1,300 unit. That's suicide for $31,000 a year. I was even appalled that they would even offer someone that. So in this next go-round, I just want to make sure that, you know, even though we're following HUH, Mr. Guidelines, that we have more 30, 40% units. I mean, 530 Rose is doing an excellent job, having half and half, but some of these other entities, they're running out too quick, and we need to make that a priority. One, for our elderly population who are transitioning from their homes into this more assisted-type living, but also we know that in the area, people are just not getting raises. They might get their, their annual raise, but they're not getting the cost of living raise. And so apartment complexes are jumping from, you know, what used to be 25 and 50 to $100 extra. Nobody's getting a $100 raise, right? So I want us to really be mindful of scoring and who we consider with developers, with what they're going to use as far as capacity with 30, 40, and 50%, even 60% is a lot. But we need some more 30 and 40% affordable units if we're truly going to house folks and not leave people struggling from paycheck to paycheck.
Oh, thanks, Commissioner Morales. Those points are well taken. And, you know, the Mount Zion project, we have vouchers to keep those rents very affordable. And so that's one project that I did want to lift up. That's under construction right now. And to your point, we met with a developer yesterday where all the 30, those low-income units are taken, and there's 100% full, but the 80% units are still open. So there is a need, and in every single housing development that we have, those lower-income units are full, and there's a demand, and they do fill it fast. So thanks for lifting that up, and it's, it's a real thing, so.
Thank you as well, Commissioner Morales. You know, to that point, as you elevate developers with 80% units, what does it take to fill those in a way that it becomes affordable? So we are vouchering some other properties. You know, I've advocated that we have developers willing to accept vouchers on their units. I encourage deep dialogue, especially for properties which we've invested to be open to taking people with vouchers or supporting additional vouchers through our housing millage. I also want to inquire, the, the scoring matrices we looked at last year, I provided some feedback at the time. And so there were a number of areas in which we were ranking applications, affordability being one of them, and an application that had, you know, maybe units affordable at the 60% AMI, which is really an average in the community. You know, we, it's, it's a confusing number used by Mishna, where we're using this area median income. But that 60% AMI is really the average worker. So more than half of people in our community are making less money than that. So really, when we're looking at affordable units at 50, 40, 30, that's half of the community in need of those units. So my point to the, the scoring matrix, there were, you know, the highest affordability did not earn the highest amount of points in the prior matrix. So I'm wondering, have we, you know, considered that feedback and adjusted so that units that have more affordability receive more scoring? And I'd also like to see prioritized, you know, when we're funding projects that have no low-income units in them, that's a, that's a tough consideration for this board. I mean, we really need to be advancing those low-income units. And so I want to see within the scoring criteria that heavily rewarded and encouraged. And we don't have as many dollars this time. We've committed quite a bit of the resources for this cycle already. So we have just over $2 million here for people to vie for this time. And if they want a successful application, come forward to us with a plan about addressing significant affordability if they want our support.
Thanks for the feedback, Chair. And a final note, thank you for your deliberations, and our 2024 annual report is head off the press, and at your dais for your reading pleasure. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Balkama. Okay, that brings us to item six is closed session. Do we have any this evening? All right. Well, that brings us to the end of our committee, the whole. Without objection, we are adjourned.
That's okay.
Welcome.